Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Crestwood Board of Education that we are doing from our separate locations somehow together through the magic of technology. Meeting to order at seven?
Ten?
Seven ten. And?
Ready for roll?
Len, yes, take roll call vote please.
Mrs. Antonick?
Yes.
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fawaz is absent. Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasanik?
Yeah.
Okay, and myself, Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the, I don't know why agenda's sitting there. The consent agenda, Ms. Senia.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the May 11th, 2020 Board Agenda, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, April 20th, 2020, the minutes from the executive meeting on Thursday, April 30th, 2020, and the check register dated April 1 through April 30th, 2020.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, but we do want to approve the amended agenda, right?
Okay, I thought Kristin said it wasn't, she just added, but I can, I can add amended.
Um, probably best just to keep the?
So put amended consent agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, I amend that to say amended consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Senia, and it's supported by, who was that, please?
Barry.
By Mrs. Berry.
I thought it was Nadia too.
Yeah, that the Crestwood Board of Education approved the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the May 11th to 2020 amended Board Agenda, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, April 20th, 2020, the minutes from the executive session meeting on Monday, April 30th, 2020, and the check registry dated April 1 through April 30th, 2020. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? If you have a favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Um, at this time, we are going to move into a closed executive session.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would recommend the board of educa, Crestwood Board of Education go into closed session for the purposes of a review of a legal opinion from Truun Law Firm.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Garcia. Recorded by, help me out here, kids.
Senia.
Len.
To, and I don't know where you got all of that, Ed.
Oh, it's right below the consent, the written consent.
I don't see it, so I'll just wing it.
Okay.
I don't, yeah.
This may be, this may be the updated, she may have updated mine.
Um, I don't know.
I have it on both.
I don't have it on either, but that's okay. Um, we have a motion from Mr. Garcia, supported by Ms. Senia, that the board go into executive session for the purpose of review of legal opinion from Truun Law Firm. Is that all right?
Perfect.
Would you, Ms. Senia, would you take roll call vote, please?
Um, Mrs. Antonick?
Yes.
Mrs. Berry? Yes. Uh-oh, she froze on us.
She's frozen.
I'll go back to her.
Okay, um, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Krasanik? Where is she?
She already left the call. Oh, no, wait.
Yeah, she did.
She's off.
Uh, Mrs. Berry?
Where'd she come?
Yes. Um. And myself, I'm a yes.
Okay, Nadia, um?
And Nadia was a yes.
Yeah, Nadia fell asleep.
She froze, she froze up.
Um, I'm gonna need to borrow a Chromebook, I'm sorry, I can't.
I might have to too, Nadia, mine.
All right.
It's freezing.
So can someone give Colleen a call?
I can, if you want me to.
Yeah, yeah, tell her to go right back where she was before, because she probably dialed the different number.
Okay.
So tell her to go to the first number she dialed.
Cause she has to vote, correct?
She has.
Um, yeah.
Okay, you know what? Let's see, where's Krasanik? Are we still on, uh?
Here, I can get her, I?
Can you get her?
I think so, let me see.
Okay, I, okay, I called, I'm dialing.
Okay, okay.
Let's just give it a sec, because we want everybody here that's here.
Hey, we need you back on so you can vote. And well, she's trying. Can I put her on speaker so she can vote?
Um, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker, Colleen, go ahead.
Mrs. Krasanik, Mrs. Krasanik.
I'm on speaker.
Uh, you know what? Duh, I had my headphones in.
Colleen, I'm doing a roll call vote, Mrs. Krasanik.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
Okay, you have?
Back to the other line.
We're all set.
There we go, business report, and we're rolling.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
Uh-huh.
First item that I have is the resolution for local district vote on Wayne Risa budget. Michigan law under section 38624 of the RISE school code requires each constituent school board of Wayne County Risa to participate in Risa's budget development process. Not later than June 1st of each year, each local school board must review the proposed budget, adopt a board resolution expressing its support or disapproval of the proposed changes the constituent district board recommends on this budget. The Wayne Risa Board is obligated to consider the specific objections and proposed changes. I've attached a copy of preliminary 2021 Wayne Risa budget for your review and a model resolution to be adopted by the board. Upon reviewing the document and seeing no objections to its contents, I'm recommending that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution supporting Wayne Risa's 2021 General Fund operating budget.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Berry?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Wayne Risa General Fund Operations Budget for the 2020, 2021 school year, and that the Secretary of the Board submit a copy of this resolution to the Secretary of the Wayne Risa Board of Education, see attachment 6A1.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Berry, supported by Ms. Senia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Wayne Risa General Fund operating budget for the 2020, 2021 school year, and that the Secretary of the Board submits a copy of this resolution to the Secretary of Wayne Risa Board of Education for attachment 6A1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Number two is appointment of Truun Law Firm as legal counsel. Crestwood School District is asking to appoint Truun Law Firm in mediation case.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Kaminsky?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education appoint Truun Law Firm as legal counsel in a mediation case as per attachment 6A2.
Support.
We have a motion for Mrs. Kaminsky, supported by, was that you, Mrs. Berry?
Ed is fine, Ed's, Ed's.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if you guys could hear me.
Who supported that? Was it Ed?
Ed.
Supported by Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry, Ed.
That's okay.
That the Crestwood Board of Education appoint Truun Law Firm as legal counsel in a mediation case for attachment 6A2. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Mousalem, is this where I can ask about the, um, uh, the rest of the best, or is this something different?
Um, if, if, if I may, Justy Berry, I would recommend to have that discussion after number five.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our third item on the list is approval of Chromebook purchase. As many of you may be aware, the Crestwood School District will be receiving approximately 1.2 to 1.3 million from CAREF Act funds. These dollars are to be utilized in 12, for activities in 12 specific areas, and I thought I had attached that one, but I did not, so I apologize for that. In light of the ever-changing future of public education, the district would like to focus the majority of these funds to purchase Chromebooks, advancing the technology and creating a one-to-one environment for our students. We are in the process of receiving a quote from CDW for 4,500 Chromebooks. The original quote price was a thousand at 240,000, that's what was attached. Our goal is to utilize the COVID grant funds in order to purchase these and not impact the general fund. Therefore, the purchase order that we're asking, a purchase order not to exceed $1,080,000.
Madam Chair?
Um, who was that? I'm sorry.
Mrs. Berry.
Mrs. Berry, I'm sorry, Nadia.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve a purchase order with CDW to purchase Chromebooks not to exceed 1,080,000. Yeah, $80.
$80,000.
$80,000. Pending release of grant dollars, see attachment 6A3.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve a purchase order with CDW to purchase Chromebooks not to exceed $1,080,000 pending release of grant dollars per attachment 6A3. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess we have learned a lot with this pandemic, and I, we don't have a choice but to really do this, because we're finding out that our students don't have the technology that they need. So I want the public to understand that there have been many students who have borrowed or still need to borrow, so this is the reason that we have to do this and we need to move into the next century, and we really don't know what's gonna happen in the future. So this is very important for us to really look at.
Absolutely. I know of school districts years ago that when you, when you became part of the school district, when you registered, you were handed a laptop.
Yes, many.
We're going to be able to supply this. Anything further?
I'd just like to say that even without all of these Chromebooks, I think we need to recognize that I'm not quite sure how administration got everybody taken care of pretty much, and the job they did to try and make all the students have access was really remarkable.
I agree.
I agree.
Anything further? Hearing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item that we have is approval of level literacy intervention or LLI kit purchase. Pending the stay-at-home order restrictions, through the use of Title I funds, Crestwood School District will be implementing a summer school program. One focus of the program will be closing the achievement gaps in the areas of reading utilizing the LLI kits. These kits are supplemental literacy interventions for students struggling with the reading and writing or are below grade level expectations in reading. The program is designed to meet students' individual needs, providing materials to work in small groups at different levels to effectively reach students, assisting them in strengthening their reading skills. The materials will be utilized as the main curriculum for the summer program. However, once purchased, the materials can be used throughout the school year to further supplement student learning. The program is strongly recommended research-based intervention that has seen enormous growth and utilized with fidelity. The district would like to purchase five kits at each level. There are seven leveled intervention kits spanning from grade six K, I apologize, K-12. We are currently in the process of getting quotes, when I wrote this, and we had previously requested a quote for three kits, three kits at each level for $95,385. So we anticipated the cost of five kits for all seven levels to be approximately $160,000. I did receive the quote, the actual quote, in for all five kits, and it came in at $157,504. I just received that this morning, and so we're recommending that we put that money through a purchase order to purchase with Hyman for LLI kits.
Madam President?
Ms. Senia, go ahead.
Um, I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve a purchase order with Heinemann to purchase five LLI kits at each of the seven levels not to exceed $160,000 as per attachment 6A4.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion from Ms. Senia, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve a purchase order with Heinemann to purchase five LLI kits at each of the seven levels not to exceed $160,000 per attachment 6A4. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, Mrs. Berry.
If I may, does this have anything to do with the OCR, because we weren't meeting the correct curriculum demands with previous administration?
I can, yeah, well, I can answer that, it's a twofold answer. 80% no, 20% yes. And what I mean by that is, this is scientifically research-based strategies that's already in place in our district and some of our schools and for some of our classrooms, and we're seeing growth in those areas. So now, because of what we've seen, we want to expand that. It does fit in somewhat with OCR's requests, not request for curriculum, but request for supplemental instructional strategies that are research-based that help our ELs as well as other learners. So it's a, it's a non-scientific 80/20 that I give you, but there is, you know, correlation between the two.
Perfect, thank you.
In addition, these funds, and I didn't put it in there, but these funds are being paid for out of the reading literacy grant for the summer program and also the Title I summer school.
Good.
Oh, and my apologies, my apologies, Madam Chair. This is also the grant that we wrote back in November that we received as a Christmas present in December. Remember when I said, so that's part of that grant as well. So it's a combination of that grant, Title I, Title II, again, because, because we were able to move, we were able to strategically budget what we have in a cost-effective format, we're able to make these purchases.
Good job.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just so the public is aware, again, kudos to our administrators for working on these grants, because I think we were very negligent in grant writing.
Yes, I agree.
Madam President?
Yes.
I, I think it should be not that the board was negligent.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ed.
For clarifying that, Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, thank you.
We weren't negligent, never. Um, that is a good point, though. They're, they're, they're working hard grant finding, which is something the board has asked forever.
Absolutely.
Get those grants, they're out.
Good job, Ed.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Ed. Is there anything further? Hearing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I hate to be a stickler tonight, but I don't know.
You are really, uh, yes, you are a stickler.
I am.
What can we do for you?
Mrs. Fawaz was on mute, so I don't know that she was able to vote.
Um, I don't know, can you hear us, Sawa?
Yeah, I can hear now, I'm sorry, I'm having technical difficulty right now.
Okay, that's, yeah, she, cause I wasn't hearing her either.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
So number five on our list is approval of window safety film purchase. So at the beginning of this school year, the Crestwood School District was awarded the Michigan State Police Grant. The change in legislation delayed the process, and the bond work and district needs created the need to revise the grant scope. The grant has strict guidelines as to what can be purchased. The window film will provide an extra layer of security at the buildings without additional costs to the general fund.
Madam President?
Mr. Garcia?
I would recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve a purchase with SCS Image Group for window film in selected areas at all of buildings not to exceed $22,110, pending approval of the Michigan State Police Grant, see attachment 6A5.
Support.
We have a motion from Mr. Garcia, supported by Mrs. Berry, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve a purchase with SCS Image Group for window film in selected areas at all of the buildings not to exceed $22,110, pending approval of the Michigan State Police Grant per attachment 6A5. Um, I would at this time say, is there any discussion? But I'm gonna butt right in and say, we begged for this. Does everyone remember that?
Yes.
We begged for this, and we were told that it was too expensive, we couldn't do it, it wasn't effective, and I am just absolutely thrilled that worth it. It's on our, on our list here. Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any comment?
Um, Madam Chair, I just wanted to say, again, this is a grant. I don't know if that's what you said, I cut out for a little bit, so this is very exciting that we're utilizing monies from other places and not from our budget. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anything else?
Madam Chair, if I may, for the public, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I want the public to know that you're not just talking about window film, it's actually a decorative window film, and it's gonna have for like the, the schools, their names, their logos, so it's gonna not, it's gonna be a very nice curbside appeal for our schools.
Oh, that's nice.
Oh, good.
Just the black mesh looking stuff, that's great. It's nice, nicely done. Anything else?
Um, now, Madam Chair, if I can, can I ask about that? We were discussing that best, S, not asphalt, is it cement?
We have to vote yet.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, I apologize.
That's okay, you're a little excited, Nadia.
I am. All this money.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, Nadia, what were you? Now she goes.
I'm just excited because we're getting all this money, you know, and we're not using our budget, they're finding, this administration is doing a fabulous job of finding money where we never thought it could be possible. Thank you guys so much for doing that. Um, okay, so I guess my question goes back to that best, uh, is it best asphalt? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, um, I know that there were some, um, they had to replace some cement, uh, blocks or something. Can you give us a little bit of information on that?
Um, there are some areas that need some additional work, some cement labs. Um, I'm not sure if Scott, I don't see him still on?
He, I don't know what happened. He disappeared, I.
But there are some additional areas that they need to fix and correct. Um, they do have, we do have an outstanding invoice with them for approximately $30,000, and then there's another $10,000 that they have not billed us for yet, that we have not paid until that work is going to be completed.
Okay, so I guess, um, if I may, my question is, um, I personally wanna make sure that we hold the money that's, that we need to fix all that work. I don't want, I personally don't want them to have all that money, and let's hold as much as we need to, whatever the cost of the job is overall.
Yep.
Right?
Hence the reason that I am still not paid and they're calling me on a regular basis, not happy with me, but until the work is finished completely, I'm not ready to pay them for that final.
Well, as long as we're happy with you, that's all you need to worry.
True.
Who cares if they're happy with you?
When the board's happy, we're all happy.
That's right.
That money's not coming out of our account until they're clear and done.
Yeah, he's a cool learner, isn't he? Dr. Mousalem picked that up right away. When the board's happy, everybody's happy.
Everybody's happy.
Hundred percent. Scott, did you want to add, I know you just popped back in, um, about, Penny had mentioned how we're holding off on everything until the job is completely done. If you wanna talk about what you've seen thus far, I know you wanted to add a couple of things.
Oh, no, that's fine, I just wanted to see what we're gonna pay them, if anything.
So, I guess we're holding off.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, that's what we should do. Okay, moving on then, thank you so much, Penny. Moving on to the personnel report, um, and that is Dr. Lazar.
Dr. Lazar.
Hello.
Hi.
All right, so we have one.
She's a doctor, doesn't she?
Yeah. My daughter says here, so, full of power.
Yeah, there you go.
We have one action item in the personnel report today. It is for the appointment of a high school counselor, Ms. Mona Hamadi. Mrs. Hamadi earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in Education from the University of Michigan Bearborn with a major in English endorsement in ESL. She has been a teacher for five years with a primary focus on English learners and special education students. She received her Master's of Arts in Counseling from Spring Art Harbor University and has completing, completed counseling internships at both Salina Intermediate and Crestwood High School, gaining experience working with both high school and middle school level students. Um, I just wanted to put in the caveat that her interviews were conducted through the process with our committee prior to closure, and the recommendation was made by that committee, um, uh, prior to that closure.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Krasanik?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Moda Hamadi as a high school counselor according to the teacher's contract schedule 7A1 MA, step three, effective June 1, 2020, and thank you for not making me say that other name.
Support.
I don't know how I could say it.
From Mrs. Krasanik, supported by Ms. Senia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Mona, help me out, somebody.
Hamadi.
Hamadi, just say Hamadi.
I really wanna know how, how to pronounce this first name.
I know, I was worried.
Yeah.
Abu Alay, Alayu.
Alayu.
Alayu, Alayu.
Alayu.
Hamadi.
Abu Alayu.
High school counselor according to the teacher's schedule 7A1 MA, step three, effective June 1, 2020. Is there any discussion? Um, welcome, we really?
Yes, welcome.
Yes, we need her. Well, it's great, and I heard through the grapevine, and the grapevine works even though we're in separate places, that she's excellent. So that's, that's good to hear. Is there anything further? Any other comments, questions? Hearing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Um, informational items?
So the first informational item we have today is for staffing updates. Um, the administration has looked at and evaluated the district needs for some additional positions. It is worth noting that these positions would also be, several of them would also be paid out of grant funding through some reallocation of some of the title funds that had gone through and been approved, and that the social worker, school psychologist positions, the assistant principal, the liaisons, the restorative practice facilitators, and administrative assistant to HR, student services, and compensatory ed, all have central to those positions, a focus on social emotional learning, and working on how to build those supports for all of our students to ensure that we are educating the whole student and supporting those students in every way we can so that they can be successful, not only academically, but in life as well. Uh, the EL liaisons have a high focus on building community and parent partnerships with the school. The restorative practice facilitators at both the high school and the middle school will also have a focus on a proactive approach to reducing disciplinary referrals, and again, through the restorative practice model, building the social emotional supports for our students.
Excellent. Madam Chair?
Awesome. Mrs. Berry?
I just wanna say again, and I'm gonna keep saying this, I am so impressed how you were able to realign, save us a million dollars just with realignment and putting the money where it needs to be, and I just wanna thank you so much for doing that.
And if we were together, we'd have a group hug at this point.
I know. Kum byah.
Yes, we would.
So thrilled. Using the money the way it should be used, saving money where we needed to save it, not being wasteful. I mean, this is, like I said, just, we'll just pretend we're group hugging, okay?
A million dollars, now that's huge.
Yes, it is.
That's huge.
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just, I would just like to re-say in regular session that I'm very impressed that Mr. Michael Schley got the position of APAD. He worked really hard, he was, the kids couldn't believe he was at all the games.
Yeah.
The coaches love him. He, he took such an interest in the kids, we haven't had that in a while.
Yeah.
And I'm just very, very pleased with Dr. Mousalem for this, and I just wanna, want the community to know that he did a great job in, in giving Mr. Schley that position.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair, but we did it together. We, we worked through this whole process, all of us, we all did, so.
I think I had a bigger part than most. I think I had a bigger part than most, but.
Wait a minute.
And, and seeing, and seeing that that is informational item number two, I did just wanna add to that conversation. Um, kudos to Mr. Schley. Because, um, you know, on short notice, he did step into the role and, and stepped up to the responsibilities of, of the role, uh, with grace and with leadership. So kudos and, and thank you to him as well.
Absolutely.
Yes.
All right.
And the, the third informational item was again already, um, touched on staffing and realignment cost analysis that was done, um, through our ability to, um, through some of the resignments, the resignations and the retirements that had occurred, um, between January and March. We were able to realign different staff members into those roles, which ended up in a cost savings because the, um, the positions that had the resignations and realignments were not, um, they, those positions were eliminated. Um, also, some of the, uh, roving or building, uh, subpositions were eliminated. And as Trustee Barry had mentioned, those did amount to an overall cost savings of roughly eight hundred thousand dollars.
Wonderful.
One million sounds better. We'll get there.
One million is that?
Other two hundred thousand for you, so.
I'm sure you will. I heard, I heard there's a board trip available to Hawaii in, uh, June. And I think since we saved all that money, that we maybe should take a trip.
That would be great for the kids.
Oh, yes, for the kids.
Right.
Just joking.
I'm having a bad connection. I can't.
Um, thank you, Dr. Lazar. Excellent report. Good news, um, for everybody. We just keep doing better and better. I'm so thrilled because it makes us look good, doesn't it? They work so hard and we look good. Okay, there's nothing for the comp ed report this evening, and that takes us to the superintendent's report, Dr. Musalem.
All right. Good evening, Board, Madam Chair. So I have one action item for approval. Um, approval of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Crestwood School Calendar. Uh, the Board of Education approved a two-year collective bargaining agreement between the Crestwood School District and the Crestwood Federation of Teachers on July twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. The parties agreed to begin negotiating the calendar for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year by April first, twenty twenty. Representatives from the Crestwood Federation of Teachers and administration discussed the calendar for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, and we are asking for the board approval. Uh, please see Attachment nine dot A dot one.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Berry.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar as presented in Attachment nine A one.
Support.
Uh, we have a motion for Mrs. Berry, supported by Mr. Garcia, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one district school calendar as presented in Attachment nine A one.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we amended that to include nine A one A, nine A one B, and nine A one C.
Sorry, you're right.
Okay.
They, as they amend their motion and support, um, so, so it has been amended to include. And what that means is we're, it's the, um, high school.
Elementary, middle and high.
Um, specifically. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries and thank Dr. Musalem for working so hard on this and having this done already.
Thank you.
Way ahead of the game, way ahead. It's wonderful.
Thank you. So I have a few, uh, informational items. First, I wanna go back to the calendar real quick, Madam Chair, just real quick for the public and for the community to understand. So what we did, and I wanna thank the Crestwood Federation of Teachers, I wanna create, uh, uh, thank, uh, Mr. Jim Stoddard for bringing the team and having virtual meetings as we did. And it was honestly, it was a very good conversation because we were all in agreement that the calendar set forth, working together, is gonna be best for our kids and our community. We have built in six full days of professional development, and those days are in the calendar in advance, so parents can make arrangements as possible. On these six full days of professional development, students will not be in school, but our teachers will be working together in professional learning communities, preparing curriculum, looking at assessments, identifying research-based technologies and supports to help our students move forward. So we are building learning within our calendar for our teachers to work together. Um, also, uh, working with our teachers, we have, uh, we have days set aside for the Eid holiday and other holidays moving forward. As well as the only difference from the county calendar that we have is we were able to work in a four-day weekend for midwinter break. So staff and students will be off on the midwinter break for a Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then Tuesday. So it'll give them a nice break in between spring break and, uh, all that. So it was a very good balanced calendar. We're hoping that we're all back into play, regular schedule in fall. And we are starting before Labor Day. Um, it'll be one day, the, the first day the teachers come back will be like an all-district breakfast and, um, a get-together and just like a welcome back type of atmosphere day. The second day will be building professional development. Then there'll be some time off, uh, the weekend will come and then the students will, we, uh, resume. We will put the calendars up on the district website, um, as soon as possible, as long as, once we get it formatted. Uh, but we will be starting pre-Labor Day. And the pre-Labor Day start is because we have to fit in our hundred and eighty hour, one thousand ninety-eight hours and our hundred and eighty school days. Um, and being that Labor Day is later this year, we have to start beforehand in order to get out of school by the second week of June. So it's a very balanced calendar.
Yeah. Yes, there's a lot of work put into it. You can tell.
Yeah.
That we've already got this. This is something we don't have to worry about getting done. And it's a big, major project. So that's great.
Our goal is to always have the calendar out well in advance. Uh, so.
Parents.
Thank you.
Yeah. Really helps everyone plan what they need to do. So that's.
It does.
Yeah.
So on a positive note, I wanna, you know, wish all the moms and the grandmothers and all the aunts who are like mothers and all the sisters who are like mothers, everybody a Happy Mother's Day.
And the dads.
So Happy Mother's Day to everyone and, uh, everyone on this, the community. Thank you for all you do, because God knows us men would be nothing without our mothers and our wives.
Thank you.
Very.
We love you all.
Sorry, Ed, we'll wait for that. You and I will deal with that later.
Madam President?
Oh, yes, Colleen, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to very quickly say that, um, our ex-assistant superintendent, Bill McFarland passed away. And I found out he was diagnosed with throat and pancreatic cancer last May.
Wow.
And he died about a month ago. And there were times that this gentleman was very kind to me, and I am sad at his passing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fun, um, with your comments?
Just a couple more, Madam Chair. My apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. I also wanted to wish everyone a happy Easter, happy Passover and a blessed Ramadan. This is that time of year where we, you know, everything comes together. Um, also, I wanna thank Mr. Fabris, uh, the administration team at Crestwood and Crest and, uh, Dearborn Heights Police Department and the Crestwood staff for, uh, putting forth a valet sale drive-by. We went and visited Jenna Baydune, the valid Victorian, Sarah Farhad, the salutatorian, Salwa Abraham, the salutatorian, and Ayah Saad, the salutatorian. I mean, you got a four-point-seven GPA as a valet, and then the free sales got a four-point-five each. It was phenomenal. There was over twenty-five, thirty cars driving by, honking, yelling, screaming, making all the noise. We had a police escort in the front, a police escort in the back. They set their sirens off. Mr. Fabris got to the house, him and, uh, and, 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 and they, they put a big banner on the front yard, you know, valance. It was great. It was a nice day.
How nice.
The families were, you can see in their face how appreciative they were.
Of course.
Also, Madam Chair, I wanna mention, you know, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. I wanna thank all of our teachers. I wanna thank our board. I wanna thank everyone. Because, you know, I've only been here a short amount of time. I feel like I'm family. Uh, the teachers have been phenomenal. Everyone has stepped up to the plate. Uh, so, you know, I was sad that I couldn't see them face to face, sent them a short, quick video, but just, we do appreciate them. And as I said in the video, I really believe that last week's Teacher Appreciation Day, I think more people appreciate the teachers now than the pandemic than ever before.
Yes.
I saw, I saw a great Instagram post. Uh, it said, you know, stop lying to me. My child isn't a joy to have in class. But, you know, um.
That was good.
Our teachers really do a phenomenal job and they're really working hard. And you know what? It's, you know, we're gonna continue to support them and, and the board, you know, you, you, your support for our team helps us support them and we all work together. So we appreciate that. We appreciate all of our teachers. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Finally, one last.
One more thing, Madam President. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's okay. One last thing on a COVID nineteen update and district response. I wanna give everyone a quick update on everything that's happening. Uh, Wayne County superintendents are meeting weekly, if not bi-weekly. Um, um, you know, we're all on subcommittees on, I'm, I'm on a subcommittee about athletics and extracurricular activities. As well as a subcommittee on, uh, uh, start and end time and transition time and different things. And there's multiple committees. So we're all talking. None of us are creating anything by ourselves. I mean, we're creating things as teams and we're bringing it back to our, our districts and we're, we're sharing it with our administration, our administration sharing with their P L Cs and having these conversations. So I want everyone to know that as of now, you know, we're working on two possible scenarios for graduation. We're waiting to see what the governor comes back with, what the governor is going to allow. So, and I wanna say that Mr. Fabris and his team have been in contact with, uh, the P T A, Mrs. Janood, as well as senior class leaders, as well as a senior class president. So there's communications, not just, you know, they're talking to the students. They're hearing what the students want. So we're, we're having those conversations. Uh, athletics, as of now, M H S A A is saying everything is still a goal for the fall. So basically, everybody's talking as if everything's still a goal for the fall, but we're still waiting. It's a, you know, it's a waiting game. And then we are planning, um, to, you know, resume as, you know, as we've always done in the past with some adjustments. But we have already started a brainstorm, uh, that we're gonna share with teachers very soon to get their opinion and feedback on three possible scenarios. Possible number one is back to normal, but with adjustments. Possible scenario number two is some form of hybrid learning in and out of class. Possible scenario number three is continuation with what we have now. The reason why we're, we're, we're creating these three scenarios, because we don't know. We're trying to be as corrective as possible. I also have a, um, request into the county and the county superintendent, Mr. Leep is, uh, Dr. Leep, he's looking into it for us too. To see how we can use some professional development time at the end of the year to start preparing for the fall with these possible scenarios. So we're on it. We're working on it. I know people want solid answers, but the minute I give you a solid answer is the minute I'm gonna sway you in the wrong direction. So we ask everyone.
Yeah.
Continue to be patient and just know we are on it. So thank you.
Great. Um, I had, uh, Sue Kaminsky called, um, and we were talking about, she was having some thoughts that were something that I had not considered that I would like you to incorporate when you're, when you're thinking about this. Um, our pre-K program, uh, the preschoolers and the kindergarteners, uh, when we go back. They are, when we go back, um, things are, I'm guessing, going to change. Um, and these little ones are used to a lot of hugging and, and, uh, and contact and no masks and, um, you know, it's not uncommon for them to crawl up in the teacher's lap and sit there. And it's important that they have that relationship with their teacher, that they have that closeness and security. Um, I don't have a solution, but I can just present the thought that Sue shared, and I thought that was really an important issue. Is to think about how, what do we do? Is there anything we can do to compensate for that, depending on whatever, whatever the guidelines are that we're left with?
Let's do.
Madam Chair, I guess what I could say, if you don't mind, um, I, County Rees, uh, the G S R P program.
Yes.
They're already looking into all that and they're putting, um, they're putting all that, uh, in place before kids go back. So they're already talking about that.
Good, good to hear. Good to hear. Okay. Yeah, I was.
And licensing, licensing is very involved too. They're gonna have their own protocol also.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Chrisianic.
I don't know if Nadia might know the name of this, uh, group, but my son and I ordered a dessert from two girls that are graduates or, or graduating from Crestwood that have a business going during Ramadan. The best dessert I've ever tasted in my life, even though I'm not allowed to have desserts. Uh, it was fried Oreos and they were the best I've ever tasted. And they deliver to your home. And I've gotta get the name. It is the best, all different desserts, shakes, uh, uh, crepes, everything you can think of during Ramadan. I don't know if it's just during Ramadan. But Brady knew someone who knew someone and we got it last night. Oh, my God, you guys have to try it.
Thank you for sharing.
It's so good. Well, well, you gotta find these two girls' names because they were fabulous.
Being that they're Crestwood graduates, if my wife or my daughter is watching right now, find out who it is, because my daughter will find out who it is.
Okay, are there any other comments, um, from the board or questions?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that for me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think Dr. Musalem had mentioned this, but for all those that are celebrating Eid, um, have a blessed Eid. And also, we won't be meeting again until June, so Happy Memorial Day for everybody as well, as a group. I was, yeah, I don't think our next meeting is till June eighth because Memorial Day will be on the next Monday, or two weeks from now.
That is correct.
It'll be different and hopefully, it'll be different.
We'll make the best.
I hope so.
Hopefully, it'll be nice outside, so we, and have big backyards and, you know, spend, spend time with your family.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just would like to let the public know that, you know, we're still doing some fixes with the bond, and I wanna give kudos to Mr. Jacobs. Um, because Mrs. Berry and I were able to go with him while he dealt with, um, our people handling the bond and went over some things that needed to be redone. And I just wanted to assure the public that, you know, we have people who are really nitpicking, and thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. The reason, um, uh, Sue invited me, but I wanted to make sure that that awning at Kinlock was painted. And I'm still having my dog find that one.
Yeah, I agree with you. It is a different color and no one's gonna.
Right? Am I crazy?
Can you see?
Thank you.
All right. And I think that the thanks extends from all of us. Scott, you're doing an excellent.
Yes.
Excellent job.
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay, is there anything else from the board? Nothing with that? Uh, yes, sir?
I just wanna make note that at, uh, eight thirty-one P M on five eleven, there are no comments from the community.
Okay.
Um.
Everybody's fasting. They wanna go eat.
I'll tell you one thing that was said in this meeting. It's just a, just a thought. When, um, Dr. Musalem wished us a happy, uh, Ramadan, a happy, uh, Merry, or happy Easter, and, um, what was the?
Passover.
Passover.
Mother's Day.
Aren't we fortunate to live in a community where we can all glean from everyone? Where we can have Dr. Musalem's mama make those things that were so delicious. Some, what are they called? Ba, ba, what are they called?
The, the, we call them ba'ah.
Ba'ah.
Oh, my gosh, you know.
Okay, I see how we write.
Did you get one, Nadia? I didn't get one.
I didn't get one. I don't know what you're talking about.
Or anything to anybody.
That's it, Musalem, you're done. I'm signing off now. Goodbye.
Blessing, I think, that we're all living in the same community and learning from each other. And, um, I appreciate all of you, and I miss you guys. Stay healthy, everyone, everyone in our district. Let's, um, let's put an end to this thing. Follow the rules and let's put it in.
Yes.
Um, yeah, we could have a motion.
Madam Chair?
Support.
Yes, we have a motion from Mr. Garcia, supported by Mrs. Chrisianic, um, to be adjourned. Anyone in favor? Yes?
I, yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're done. Thank you very much. This was.
Good night, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you.